All right, I would like to call the meeting to order on October 23rd at 5:30 at the Dover Sherburne Middle School for the Dover School Committee. Welcome, everybody. Hopefully, thank you for coming out to the middle school and coming a little earlier to accommodate a potentially busy evening. The first item on the agenda is community comments. Do I have any community comments? Hearing none. We will move on to the reports, starting with Ms. Diallo with the principal's report.
Thank you very much. We feel like we're in full gear at Chikering, and we've had some really nice parent events. And Dr. Kito came over for superintendent's coffee and taking his lead. We are going to have some principal coffees throughout the year. The first one is scheduled for November 1st.
Is that the, have we done that before, or is that new?
It's new. We had different kinds of gatherings. We've had curriculum coffees, which are focused on a certain part of the curriculum, and we really had declining attendance for those, even when we offered them both morning and evening. So this is going to be an update on our priorities and our initiatives, and also time for parents to share any questions or thoughts that they have and suggestions. So I'm hoping it'll be a nice open exchange with parents and just give everyone a nice opportunity to connect.
Great.
In terms of curriculum and learning, we've been building our literacy benchmark data meetings at our common planning time meetings, which are every week. And that's an opportunity for us to look at that beginning of the school year benchmark assessment data, layer in the direct observations from the classroom teachers, and just see if we want to add in supports for any of our students. That's been a fun piece that we do a couple times a year. So we have just completed those.
Okay.
In terms of professional development across the district, we have training from Synergy Systems, and the feedback from that was very positive. People felt that it was beneficial. And as a nice compliment, I think, to that, another day shortly after that, we had a presentation by John Mallon on anxiety. So those were both very well received. In terms of the professional growth and evaluation system, educators have some little goals. We're providing feedback this week. And as you know, the deadline for those is extended this year to November 1st, so we are on track for that. We've had a few people go out on leaves, and those are being filled. And we attended the DSEF Gala the other night, which was lovely. They saw somebody there. And we really appreciate all that this community does through the DSEF, through the PTO, and on certainly all the efforts of this group, just to make everything work so well for our students. So we do thank. Do you have any questions?
Any comments, questions by the group?
Well, I had a, no, a kind of a question about the partnership. That was really interesting to hear. And is that, that looks like there's teacher exchanges. And in terms of the students, will there be any kind of student exchange or interaction?
Yes. So we had our first gathering where we had educators present. It all evolved rather quickly once we established the school and the principal who was interested in engaging with us.
Okay.
So last Friday, we had a meeting, and we really want the ideas to come directly from the educators as much as possible, and then we want to facilitate whatever they think would be beneficial. So some of the ideas indeed were to have students exchange, whether it's kind of a time capsule or a treasure box or something like that. I'm looking to Ken because he was, he was, he's a participant in that group. As well as Skype time, as well as actually visiting one of their schools. So we're looking forward to seeing how it evolves, and we are there for full support. I've already benefited from my conversations with Craig Martin, the principal, and I just think it's going to be really helpful across the board.
And this is onward going, not just, okay. Great, I would love to see that.
Thank you.
I wanted just quickly on the, I think it was under curriculum and learning, you said you talked about some of the data and the benchmarks. Is there any information you can share, or is there like a report that's going to come out eventually? Maybe I misinterpreted. You mentioned that you reviewed data, and I just was wondering what was sort of in the meat of that.
Sure, I can share more about that. So the data that we look at is DRA assessments, which is around comprehension and fluency and those sorts of things. For students who have taken the MCAS in the past, we look at that. We talk about the observations that the teachers have. So we have a number of, we have a number of data points that we look at. And so it's all standard assessments, and parents are certainly welcome to ask the classroom teachers about that. So there's nothing, it's kind of standard assessments that we do with our students. Did that answer?
Well, yeah, I just, you know, you talked about how, you know, kids are speaking in public, and then sometimes there's anxiety, or they do well when they otherwise might have other challenges areas. And, you know, you've learned different learning styles. I think you addressed when talking with the students, and I just wasn't sure if there was any things that you could share. But it sounds like you are looking at how you can address teaching with different students and how it affects a standardized test. Is that sort of the primary focus?
Well, the standardized test, the MCAS, that's one piece of information, but probably the least relevant when we're thinking about day-to-day interventions for students. But we, the benefit of having those discussions at designated times throughout the year and as a team is that the team can see the needs across the whole grade level, and we may say, we want to pull two students from this classroom and two students from that classroom because they have a similar, a similar learning need. And there's sort of that opportunity to have kids have a, have kind of a social aspect to that group as well as similar learning partners.
So it happens, that meeting happens more than once? It's a quarterly type of thing, or whatnot? Okay.
Yeah, we have it, we have it three times a year.
All right, great. Thank you. Moving on to Ms. McCoy and the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you. So following what Ms. Diallo was saying about the interventions that come out of looking at the benchmark exams over the course of the year, Chikering has hired an interventionist to work with kiddos, primarily in math, as we already have a reading specialist in the building who works with students in reading and writing. So that math interventionist will be there to do work in the classrooms with teachers, to pull kids out for short periods of time if they need a little help with this skill or that skill, just to get them back up to the norms so they can, you know, proceed on with their lessons, and perhaps even do some co-teaching in some of the classrooms. So that's very exciting. Ms. Diallo mentioned the synergy, professional development work, as well as the mental health that came behind it, because we know obviously if we want to develop safe schools, we need to make sure that our students are feeling connected and safe. We have reconnected with teachers and scholars. Teachers and Scholars, which is a program out of Harvard University that allows public school teachers, K through 12, and otherwise, I guess, to come out to a university and work with professors in content areas and feel like intellectual scholars again. And they usually do two or three full professional days doing that. And I know it was here, popular here in the past, so we brought it back as a pilot this year. And of the 20 seats that we were granted as a pilot, they were gone within hours of emailing the staff saying that these are available. So clearly, it's popular. Clearly, it feeds the teachers, and it's something that we should expand next year moving forward. Speaking of professional development, it's October, and we're planning for the November Fall PD Day. After Thanksgiving, we'll have facilitators here from the Ideas portion of ECHO, again, working around cultural proficiency. They're the ones that worked with our teacher leaders in the summer. They're going to do a workshop early in the morning for elementary, middle, and high school teachers on how to have conversations about any, you know, difficult topic, social justice or otherwise, with kiddos at those different age groups. So as we're integrating more ideas and voices and perspectives into the curriculum, we need to be able to talk about them. So that's a skill set that we'll be developing for the educators. And then later on in the day, we are lucky to be able to partner, as is mentioned, with Arts Emerson and bring the play Mr. Joy to Dover Sherburne. So our educators will have a chance to see it and reflect on the experiences of individuals with different isms that are associated with them and kind of, you know, at the end of the day, how we're all connected together in one community and talk about how that affects our work with kids and in the classroom. And some of our teachers, K through 12, have volunteered to run debriefing sessions after that. So they're actually going to be trained by Emerson to facilitate with their peers difficult conversations. So again, the whole day is around difficult conversations, and that'll be in the afternoon. And then we are able to bring the show to the community at night. So that'll be a 6:30 show on Monday, November 26th. We will be sharing information with our parent community and the larger Dover Sherburne community first, and then opening it up to our colleagues and friends in Needham and Westwood and Medfield's that are doing similar work around cultural proficiency. We are the second public school in Massachusetts to be able to bring this show, and there is a long list of public schools that want to, so we're actually lucky to be second in the docket. And I know many people will be, have been calling, will be calling to say, can we bring our staff, or can we bring our families? So we are fortunate. MCAS, the results have been mailed home, and we'll have a full report, speaking of assessments, in November for you to review.
Great.
Do you know why the Teachers as Scholars program went away?
I think it was just transitions in leadership. I can't really, I know.
I didn't even really call it over my six years, so I don't know what happened to it.
And is the 20 slots a pilot, or is that budget-based, or?
That was a pilot. So we took 20 to see if there'd be interest. I was afraid to take more because there was a monetary value attached to them if we didn't fill them, and they went very quickly. And so that was just some of the courses that they offer. It was kind of a snapshot. So next year, we'll be able to provide, you know, of the 40 courses, and I'm sure there'll be even greater demand, you know, as we, if we provide more scope within each of the discipline areas.
And then you'll look for or provide more seats as well for that? Great, terrific. Thanks.
The Teachers as Scholars programs kind of had, it seems to me, like a renewed interest among teachers in Massachusetts. When I was early on in administration, I used to go to different seminars. Like, I remember one, for example, on AI, and going over to MIT and meeting Kismet and learning all about how the work with this artificial intelligence. It wasn't necessarily directly related to my work as a principal, but it was, it was, it just made me, it was fulfilling. It was fulfilling, and it was, and that's important. That's kind of an important part of the PD. It doesn't have to always be like directly honed in on something. There's something rejuvenating about being with people and learning, exercising our brains. So it's a different kind of PD, and I think that's why it's so attractive.
I should bring a sample of courses.
That's a great idea.
Within, you know, a content area.
Or something else.
You can get stuck to your curriculum. It's an opportunity to go outside and learn about, you know, cryptology or the mathematics of elections and kind of refresh teachers to be like, oh, yeah, I can bring some of that back to my classroom.
I know we were talking last, last meeting, or I asked a question around the teacher side of the social, not the social emotional health, the health and well-being, but I would think that was kind of some way to, you know, kind of picking that box a little, yes.
Exactly.
Good connection. Thank you.
The math intervention, is that a full-time position?
Thank you. It is a part-time position. We actually have the person, Linda Hartree, at school all day today. We had her join several common planning time meetings so she could get to know the teachers. And she'll be, as you were saying, she'll be supporting students directly as well as doing some coaching, perhaps some co-teaching. We're very fortunate that we found someone who is a licensed math teacher, classroom teacher, and has a great experience and connects really well with people. So we think she's going to offer a tremendous amount. So she'll be part-time for the majority of the year.
May I just add on to that, that this is part of our work with the RTI model and trying to strengthen what we're doing with all kids in the classroom and then in small groups, so that we have fewer students who need special education services. So over time, hopefully, we'll see a drop in those numbers. So the resources that we're, you know, providing now into interventionists will hopefully help in the long run. But that being said, this interventionist position is currently being funded by Title I money, which is a grant. So as we collect data and determine what RTI model is going to work best for our kiddos, we may need to think about, you know, the long-term necessity of that or other positions.
Keep that in mind. Let's keep that in mind. Please do.
Can I just give a plug for Mr. Joy? I was fortunate to get to go see it with some of the administrators, and it's fabulous. So everyone watching out there, make sure Monday, the 26th is incredibly powerful. I mean, I, days, weeks later, I still think about it. It's a one-person show, and it's just brilliantly done, so go. And it's right here. It's like, it's amazing. So go if you can.
It's actually part of the freshman orientation for Emerson College students. So we were, when we went, we were with one of the kids who were just entering Emerson. It's really cool to be part of that experience, too, and to hear the kids' questions and.
So they all stood up afterwards, which I think may be what you're getting at in the PD, and shared their any past experiences around these issues, and it was, I mean, some of them were really
Emotional.
emotional, and it was very moving, and it was, it was broader, much broader perspective than we have in our little world. So I would, I really hope everyone goes.
Thank you. That makes a really good point, that not only is the content that's important, and to understand, you know, the rest of the world looks, but the theatrical value, I mean, just for kids to see how talented this young woman is, and she's just amazing. It's definitely impressive.
Anyone else? Well, on that point, I did make a note, and you touched on it, market it. Make sure people know. I mean, Brooke's words were awesome. So anytime, you know, in newsletters or, you know, anytime we can just promote it, that sounds like it's going to be a fantastic opportunity for people, at least if they know about it, they can at least make a decision if they should attend or not.
Emerson has asked us to do a joint press release, so it'll be coming out in the papers as well.
Isn't there, what's the name of that?
We're going to do a Who's In.
Who's In, exactly. So for registering for tickets.
You mentioned the Academic Innovation Committee and then volunteers. Are you looking for one per committee, or?
One per school committee would be great.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought I was already that person. Am I?
Is that the, you were assigned to?
Yeah. Is that the same thing?
Thank you.
Yeah, excellent.
All right, good. I just wasn't sure.
I texted Beth yesterday about that information.
So we have our one.
But there'll be others to get involved along the way. So stay tuned.
And then mentioned MCAS, November. We'll look forward to seeing that in the agenda for November. Perfect. Okay, Dr. Kito.
Very good. So, yes, as Laura mentioned, the, you know, the parent coffees, I think, are really important for me, and I plan to continue to have those. A great opportunity for me to kind of set the record straight, if anything is out there in the room or no. It's always an opportunity to tell people what's going on in the school, what our priorities are, you know, what I'm concentrating on right now as the superintendent, and give people opportunities to kind of share their thoughts. And so those have been really well-received and pretty well-attended, I have to admit. So we've had three of those this year. And classes at district have been excellent. I did mention, and you know this by now, that Debbie Dixon is actually in her third week. Two and a half weeks, it feels as if she's been here for two months. She's really delved deeply into the job. We're very fortunate to have her. She brings with her 39 years' worth of experience in education and a real keen eye. She was instrumental, as you'll hear later on, in our process of the special education review, and certainly the discussions at the central office. She's been a great addition, so we're thrilled with Debbie. You know by now about the security training that took place. I think it's always important to let people know that this is always on our, on our top of our priority list. You know, the safety of the kids is our number-one responsibility, and we take it very seriously. We, the training that we did with the teachers was well-received, I think, because people appreciated the fact that they're, we've moved to a model of training that's more proactive than reactive, in that we actually give teachers permission to make on-the-spot decisions about their safety or their student's safety in the event of the unthinkable, and somebody entering our building who's not wanted there. So that's kind of practice. Some people have heard of it referred to as ALICE training. This is a locate, lock down, leave, live. But the teachers had the opportunity to participate and to practice these things, and came away from us, the feedback was overwhelmingly positive, and surveys about how they felt empowered more than anything. So that was important to us. And as a follow-up to that, we held a emergency response team for the district. So all the district leadership was in the emergency response team, meaning to talk about that with the police, to talk about next steps, to take a look at our protocols across the system, make sure that we're consistent, to make sure we talk about the importance of connecting with our students. Because, as I've said many times, and will say one more tonight and probably many times after this, that the training and the safe facilities are critical. But there's no substitute for ensuring that all of our students feel valued and a strong sense of belonging within the system. We can't afford to have any students feel like they don't belong here or are disenfranchised. So that is a very positive event for us. Really happy about the newsletter. We plan to send those out quarterly, so that was our first and our debut. Thank you to Ms. McCoy for her help in putting that together, and Ms. Engerso and my assistant in the office. We used a program called SMO, which was really helpful to us. It's a nice tool for doing this. We're lucky that that's just kind of at your fingertips, and these programs have come so far that you can really just plug in information. It was awesome. And we had 2,000 hits on that last I checked, and one like. Somebody actually, somebody clicked the heart.
It was him?
It was me. I have to admit, it was me. I confess. So I liked it. So maybe people just didn't notice the heart. I'm not sure. But we were excited to have that off the ground. And I'm also putting up a blog, which is an opportunity for kind of me to share insights on things that are not just business, as usual, nor my perspective on education, my thoughts and reflections on education. And that, too, is getting some hits. So those have been an attempt to kind of enhance communication with the community. Speaking of professional development, as you saw in my goals, my professional development matters to me. It's really important for me to stay current and to stay rejuvenated and fresh in the field. And my visit from Tim McCollum, who reached out to me out of the blue, that's Dover Sherburne's reputation working for you. He must have recognized Dover Sherburne's great success and wanted to come out and see the system. He was visiting for a course at Harvard. He's a superintendent from Australia in the Sydney, north of Sydney area, responsible for oversight of schools with approximately 900,000 kids. So I considered him like the Secretary of Education. So it was pretty cool. And because it was a big event, I took him over to Blue Ginger for lunch. No, not Blue Ginger, Blue Moon, sorry, Blue Moon. You were in the background, you're asking. Okay, exactly. So, but we had a nice visit, shared a lot of insights, and toured the schools, had some great conversations with the kids that day. It was really cool. And they were fascinated by this, this guy with the accent from Australia. Yes, I actually really want to compliment Laura on her establishing that relationship with Craig Martin from Michael Perkins School in Boston. That's easier said than done, to kind of get something like that initiated. I went to the meeting where there were teachers and reps kind of from both buildings for just a great conversation. And I actually covered for Mr. Wadness's class for a few minutes. I hope I didn't take them too far off the rails. I had a great time with the kids in there for roughly 20 minutes. That's my, that's my window.
Pop quiz?
Yeah, my quiz. Really, really nice conversations with the kids about their work and what they were trying to accomplish, and what a nice group of kids. I, that was the highlight of my day. The last thing I just want to, the last two things I want to mention is the phones are where they need to be. We have been waiting a long time. I can't believe Adrian's not here.
He's listening to this.
We have, we have been pushing for this for a long time. We all know how hard it is to work with utilities. Verizon actually was really very helpful, but it's hard to get the right people on the phone. And eventually, Anthony Rotaco was able to connect with them, and so we do now have the fiber optic lines into the school. So the breakdowns of the phone system should be behind us permanently. So we're really excited about that.
Great.
And then the last thing is the event coming up, which you can read about there. But we're working with Challenge Success. It's really a challenge-success initiative. They've, they reached out to Beth and myself about doing a presentation kind of on the future of DS and where is DS headed? And what's next at DS? And so we're really excited about that. That's coming up on November 8th at 6:30 here in the middle school up in the Corel Row. And should be a good time. And that's it for me.
Comments? Questions?
Any top-of-mind takeaways from your meeting with Tim McCollum?
Well, what's interesting to me is that all the way in the Southern Hemisphere, on the other side of the globe, they're concerned with a lot of the same things we are, such as social emotional well-being of kids. I'm not sure why that is such an issue, but it seems to know no boundaries. So we had a lot of conversation about that. He was really fascinated by our D Block art class in the middle school, where the kids can drop in, essentially. And we had some great conversations with the kids while they were working. You know how you can have conversations with your kids when you have them in the car? It's the same idea. They can't walk away from their artwork, so you can just kind of.
They don't have to, like, look at you.
They don't have to look at you. So we had some great conversations, and he was really eating that up. And he's invited me to stop in if I'm over there. So I'm like, sure, I mean, it's possible. You never know. So, but just really, Michael, similar our challenges are. Living schools change, the difficulty is to change. Now, imagine trying to change a 900,000 student system with multiple superintendents answering to you. It's incredible. And he was remarkably calm. So.
It's because he was very far away.
He's had enough time away. Exactly right. But, you know, that was, that was great.
Did, did he mention social media as a potential cause?
Well, we both, yeah, we both theorize.
We're talking about here.
Yeah, we both theorize that that's had an impact on kids. And whether it's because of the kids' overuse or reliance on social media, or adults using social media so much and kids not getting the same kind of attention from their parents, we did have that conversation. Just a lot of the same challenges. And he was, he's lucky to take that leadership course at Harvard. I mean, he was among some really, some top educators. So it was great. It was a nice event. He Ubered out to Dover. Imagine that. It's a long ride.
You were back.
I actually brought him back. I brought him back. I didn't know if he could get an Uber. We might have been counting on that, especially on a Friday or Saturday night.
Anything else? Okay, well, I just want to say, you know, the phones, it's great news. Thank you to everyone in the office, you know, for managing sort of the updates and letting us know. And it probably hasn't been, it's a lot more difficult than the ones on the other end of it than us that are getting the emails. So thanks for getting that taken care of. Thank you to Anthony. And then newsletter, you know, that's great. It's the first one. Keep it up. I was going to ask you if you got any feedback, but I guess one like is what you've heard so far, so.
I did hear from myself. Actually, we did, we did get some feedback.
Oh, good.
We did get some emails, and people were appreciative of it.
Good. Well, thank you.
Okay.
Moving on, financial report.
So you have in your packet your first look at operations for fiscal year '19, which are very rosy for Dover, primarily because of some. are very rosy for Dover primarily because of some post-budget staffing changes. So as you know, we, we take a picture of the school like in last February. And so anything that happens between February and when school starts can have an impact on your budget. And this particular year, things happened that only had positive impacts on your budget. Two retirements that we did not anticipate and then some other staffing changes in some of the placements within the school, which allowed me to sort of say at this point in time, you're looking at about a $190,000 positive salary variance. So that will continue to potentially change a little bit as other things happen. One thing we note is that, and Laura noted in her report, we're still not fully staffed with our educational assistants and we have some retiring and such changing jobs still. So that was going to resolve, result in some, probably some additional savings because during periods of the time, those positions haven't been filled. So those will continue to fall out as we progress through the year. So we will have a complete summary of staffing for you in November because that'll be very helpful as we take a look at the fiscal year 20 budget. So we'll make sure we have a good snapshot of where we are now because that obviously is going to lay the groundwork for our fiscal year 20 work. On the expenditures, it's still really early to have anything earth shattering to report. We're slowly encumbering additional expenses. With Mrs. Dixon coming on, we've got to sit down and go over some of the special ed stuff. So some of that hasn't been encumbered yet. And we've done transportation, you're building maintenance contracts, electricity, and we're going to put in heating this month. So that'll show us where we stand with some of those expenditure accounts. As far as out of district goes, we have the majority of all the placements encumbered right now. So it gives you a snapshot of where we are. We do still have a few placements being finalized, but going both ways. So we're not anticipating any material variances today, but as we all know, tomorrow something else could pop up. So that's something that we just have to look at on a day-to-day basis. But we will also provide you with a summary chart of where we stand now in fiscal year 19 versus what we, where we thought we'd be. So you can just sort of see the activity. The good news is on circuit breaker reimbursement. If you remember, last year, we started this getting reimbursement at 65%. They're coming out at 72% this year and basically telling us that they think we're going to end up at 75%. So Governor Baker was very strong about getting the special education reimbursement up to the mandated rate of 75%. So I think he's been successful in doing that. So that's good news for the town. Because as you know, 100% of circuit breakers goes back to the town. Any questions on that short report?
I guess really more of a placekeeper for discussion. I don't know, maybe it's a joint or maybe it's down the road, but to the extent that that circuit breaker is greater than expected and there are needs going forward for enhancement of special ed services, perhaps that can be a consideration.
Right.
That there, you know, there is kind of over, an over give back based on what was anticipated.
Right. So just keep in mind though, that Dover does their budget anticipating no circuit breaker reimbursement. So they're funding 100% of your...
It's more of the, I guess, the optics vis a vis the town and hey, there's more that's going back.
Right. Right. Exactly.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I went to the tech meeting this week, last week. And I, we were, we had like a share, job share with this school group members after. And we were talking about the van pool. And we are not the only ones who are having problems. So I just was wondering where that...
So I just went to, so Except, the collaborative Except runs the, our transportation. So we just had a task force meeting last Thursday because Except is trying to serve the districts, but the capacity is such that they're having to subcontract with van pool. And some districts are getting subcontracted from van pool to other carriers. So one district there had five different service providers. So it is a struggle for all of us. Except came to us, the member districts requesting to, for us to put more investment in the transportation side so they can bring more of it back in-house. So they are going to be discussing that with the superintendents this week to see if there's buy-in from the districts. Obviously, they work for all the district communities to fortify and invest more in the in-house transportation so they can potentially take more in. I will say there are several districts vocally from messages from their superintendents that maybe they need to pull out of.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to think about spending more money when what we're getting right now is not...
It's capacity, but it's capacity.
Vanpool now has their own vans and they do it themselves. So they started small and she said now they have like 16 or 17 vans.
Right. Right. So some districts are looking to maybe to take the road off Except until they can fortify themselves internally. We would never, we would never want to do it on our own. We just don't have the cohort because most of our students all go different places. So we'd have to have a van per student. So it's a really useful service for us to have. And so there's, I think, and just so you know, I would say, and I brought this up in the big group and the director thanked me, it's, you hear the loud voices, but we probably only have of our almost 30 students that are transported, only really had three issues. So you have to put in perspective of the number of students that are transported versus the number. And most districts said, yeah, I mean, it's a handful, but it's the, it still looks like there's customer service issues. But it is a hot topic for all the districts who participate in Except. And it's the people who use, some use van pool directly and they're having the same issues, so.
You can, you can also factor in the economy right now is especially strong. And so that impacts our ability to hire people at the lower wages because there are better opportunities out there. And that impacts us in the schools, but it also impacts bus companies and Except in this case. So it's, it's a difficult time.
I look to make it more attractive by making them not a seasonal employee, but they're doing so much more summer transportation now than they've ever had before, that if they can make it more a year-round and provide benefits, then I think they can have like, you know, have less turnover with their van drivers. So they definitely have some things they're looking at. They have one dispatcher. I mean, there's like 600, I mean, it is, they do run on a really lean staffing basis. One of the districts did recommend that they bring in a sort of a consultant to come in and do an independent review of what their needs are because they feel like the districts might be more enticed to follow what an outside consultant says. So they're working on it and more, I mean, they've left a lot of the decisions to the superintendent's meeting this week, but it is being addressed.
So is there, are there action items? Is it kind of fleshed out and dates behind this kind of stuff or is it just...
Well, there are. The actual meeting is, is on Thursday, but there were issues with, because it's a supplemental meeting on this particular topic and there were issues with whether or not people could make that time slot. So it's actually still in flux.
Okay.
At last I checked.
Yeah, there's, this is, the meeting for the superintendents, half the districts use transportation, half don't. So they didn't want to take the whole board meeting. So they were trying to add on a meeting just for transportation.
Right.
But I'm sure a little bit will still be discussed.
In the regular meeting.
In the regular meeting.
If anything meaningful comes out of it, you can share. I think the committee would like to hear.
Okay.
If there's anything, please.
No problem.
Okay. I think the next item on here, we have the enrollment report.
Yes. So, so October 1st is really the date that the state recommends, requires us to look at our enrollment figures. And, and I think that's because they essentially know that by October 1st, things are settling down, but it's not hard and fast. You know, since October 1st, we've definitely had people come and go. So it's, it's kind of the mark in the sand where we say, everybody's going to look at their enrollment on that date, but it's still always in flux. But on that date, you can see that we had 477 students at Chicaguen. So that's down 100 from the 2009, 10 school year. And I just calculated the average to be 503. So we are riding below the average over the past 10 years, but you can see the trend. And, you know, 477 is actually the highest in the past five years. So we are ever so slowly, I think, inching up. Dawn asked you to take a look at how close we were in terms of our projections on class sizes and...
Right. So our three-year projection was 478. So our three-year projection seems to be sort of what we, for Dover. But I will say, if you look at the individual grades, they were sort of all over. We ended up one off the three-year projection, but the, the grade projections were all, sort of all over the place. I think the biggest surprise was our kindergarten. We had a lot of activity from where we started. It left it in February with the known census. We thought we were going to have a kindergarten class of about 63, 64. We ended up with 75. So that's a fairly large kindergarten class for us if you look back historically. So it'll be interesting to see if that growth then gets us back up to the 90s, 95s like we used to be because we always see growth in kindergarten all the way up to fifth grade. And starting with such a high number, that's going to be an interesting trend to sort of take a peek at. We, we thought fourth grade was, it had the biggest growth, that one particular grade. So that was interesting. We had thought that it wouldn't quite be as large, but it, it was. If you remember, we looked at those projections last year and we thought that was going to be a really low class. So that was, that was a little bit different. So like the first grade had, used, was that split between the first and the one-year and three-year growth. The second grade was right on for the one-year growth. Third grade had actually no growth, which was interesting. And the fourth grade was the three-year growth and the fifth grade was the three-year growth. So it was a mixture that got us to, to that.
I mean, if you follow diagonally across, that's how you can see one class moves to the next.
Exactly. But, you know, we were, all of our classes are still within the year guidelines of 17 to 22.
So this is, this is always something that we clearly have to keep our eye on as we develop our budget. We, as you recall from last year, have continued with Bill McCollum's approach of doing that one-year and three-year projection. And I think it is helpful. And we will do that as we go into the budget process as well.
Right.
Great. Okay. Any comments on that? Capital, please.
Capital, yeah. So you're seeing your first pass of your capital request for fiscal year 20 through 24. If you remember, we did not ask the town for any capital in fiscal year 19. And let me just go through a few things with you. So for fiscal year 20, if you look at your old schedule from last year, we had a couple more items that aren't on there now or have been moved. The first one is the EMS software replacement. We have pushed that out another year and that's really being driven by the project that we have going on here at the region that still is, is getting slow to get started. The region is going to be our base for the new EMS system. So we can't do anything with the elementaries until we get the region sort of up and running. And your system is still, wow, obviously one of the newer systems, so there's no reason at all to push it out. I talked about...
When's the region expected to?
This year.
Okay.
So then we'll have, then we'll have, well, yeah. So then we'll have a game plan and then we'll know how to price out what we're going to do for Chicaguen. But there's no immediate need to do any upgrades at the, at Chicaguen. So it's, it's fine to push it out. The other thing that's missing, if you remember, we had a technology request for updating of our virtual environment. And Anthony spun the last year, looking a little bit closer at where Chicaguen is on that and has actually requested for that to be taken off, primarily because of the number of web-hosted systems and things that are on Google now. He feels like we don't have to have as big of an infrastructure at Chicaguen. We probably can, instead of replacing some of the key components that we put into Chicaguen over the last, when Chicaguen was built, we are going to operate on two servers that would be able to be purchased through just our normal operating fund. So there is no need to ask for that larger technology request. So that left us with the paving of the emergency access road and the walkways, which we'll talk to capital, but in the past, they've picked up most of the paving, if you remember. This little piece got left in and so we'll just have a discussion with them to see if they'll just pick it up with their regular paving or if they still want to see Chicaguen cover it, carrying it on their capital request. Given that there, there weren't a lot of things on 20, we went out to 21 and started looking at the floors to see if there was a need to potentially bring the floors into 2020. But it, you would be sort of hard, it'd be hard still, I think, right now to replace the floors at Chicaguen because they're still in fairly good shape. And so we're going to leave those where they are versus, you know, they're slated for it to start in 2021. It's our judgment at this point in time that that makes the best sense. So there really is not a whole lot that we could bring to add to your 2020. I know there's a desire to sort of evenly ask the request, but I think you also have to be prudent about how you do that.
I know the soccer game got pushed. It's delayed.
So that, we filled in 2000, most of everything else stayed the same. And so we picked up 2024. So that's a year you haven't seen yet. The hallway floors, they've, we've put over two years right now. I could see us probably doing upstairs one year and downstairs another year. So that's what you see, the bigger numbers at 23 and 24. It includes the classrooms. And then the other big piece was the rooftop HVAC system, which is slated for 23. That's when, that's the piece that we talked about when we do that to look at boosting the cafeteria, condenser so we can do the cafeteria. So that's, that's where that stands. And I had Ralph take a look again at that and that still seems to be the appropriate timing on that. So I am requesting the committee approve this initial draft so that we can pass it along to the Dover town.
The draft of the capital or that?
Yes. The draft of, because they requested the first passes in by October 12. I've got an extension for you guys so that you can do it after your meeting tonight.
A couple of questions. One, the, the dates in here, or do they generally track onsite, in-site?
Yes.
And to the extent, perhaps to the extent they don't, whether it's either pushed out or pushed in, maybe we can see that just to see how that's, how that's moving. Because I know that Ralph is always looking at things that, that may be in addition to it or maybe could be pushed out.
Right. So I'll highlight where we deviate. So remember, we use onsite, in-site as sort of as a guide. It gives us the range and we determine where we're going to put it. And a lot of things like the EMS system is in the year that we told them we thought we were going to do it because they also try to comply with what we're doing. But we'll highlight, so there's nothing on here. Sometimes at the region, we'll have things on here that are in onsite. Everything on here is on, in onsite, in site. But I can sort of just asterisk what's deviated from their...
Great. Thank you. And the EMS replacement, is there any consideration to actually push that out a bit more to see what the, not only that at the region, the system is installed, but to see how it's working? So there can be some learnings from after one full year of that being in place and working?
Yeah, I think definitely there's still potential to push that out another year. I think we'd wait and see how it goes and we'd also have to look, start looking at the age of...
Existing.
The existing. The, the main thing why we're doing the region is that's going to be the, sort of the platform that then we will feed off for Dover and Sherburne. Because that, what that's going to allow is going to allow the director of facilities for the district to sit in his office and be able to...
Control everything.
...all the systems. And we don't have that capability right now. And the one at the region actually is in need of being replaced because it is outdated and not... and not, and it's giving us some false data. It's not the case at the two elementaries right now. But our, that is our, that's our long-range plan, is to have that one operating system that, as Ralph says, he can be on his boat and figure out what's going on.
He's got a boat.
So, that's, that's sort of like what we're, that's our long-range goal is to, to sort of streamline that. And that'll allow us to, the systems are so much more efficient in what they can do. It'll probably allow us to, you know, be more cost-effective in our energy use also.
Any of you guys, anyone else? I just, a couple of quick questions. So, again, trying to understand if you can level set a little bit more.
Right.
What's, so you have Concrete Plaza. Does that match up nicely with paving? I mean, I don't, what's the difference there? Like why?
So, if you know, if you go right outside, like the back of the school and the fronts where we have the concrete plaza.
Yeah.
So, we have that placeholder sort of there. We only replace those if they become sort of a safety hazard. So, we've done a couple in the last three or four years in the front because the, the frost have made it, right, was uneven. So, we took up certain of those sections and we did.
So, we don't know that we need it next year, 12-5?
Right. That is a guide for inside, in-site.
Because if we need it, I was suggesting pushing that.
Right. It is a separate type of work though.
Okay.
It'll be two separate contractors.
The ATRAC, I know we have it out in 23. Is there similar life spans for the equipment that might make sense to have it marry up with what we just did for the rooms? Meaning, you know, does the compressors change? I mean, I'm a little over my skis here, but you know, if we had everything sort of match up, would that make the cycles similar as opposed to having a gap of potentially three or four years in stage of usage?
So, this is the one that is the existing that was put in that does the central admin, the music room.
It's pretty old.
Yeah. So, it's a different.
15 years?
He pushed it forward into 20 when we just did the other, all the other units in 18 or 19.
Yeah, I think it's better. Yeah, I think, I don't think you would want to replace that before, be too early. I mean, Ralph's like, that would sort of be wasteful, I think. Because I, I had talked to Ralph about, I mean, you brought up several times, you know, the desire for the cafeteria.
Yeah, so this cost is gonna change. It's gonna increase when we start talking.
Right. We always said we would piggyback on that. So, I, we talked about moving it forward, but from a cost-effective standpoint, the system is still running well and it was, it would make, it wouldn't make sense to go offline earlier than we would to.
Okay. Were we saying what's increasing the cost?
Because we're looking at adding.
So, they're over what we already have here?
Yeah, we would increase, yeah. When we get closer to that, that number probably will go up because our goal is to do that, to build, to build a condenser or compressor up there for, to serve as a larger area. Because of the location of where it is that we work.
Okay. One final lob. Windows, especially with safety and what we've gone through with training, is there an opportunity to do anything with windows that might make sense for the well-being of our students?
So, windows, you know, a long, long time ago, they talked about the windows because you can't replace any of the hardware in those windows. But we haven't had any issues with them and so that would be a huge undertaking that for the building at the age it is, those windows still have some more life.
I was just thinking, if there's a safety, we can make a window in every classroom that might be accessible if you need to leave.
I mean, I think, I think you could, you could do that in any school, but it's a big ticket item, a big ticket item because you're essentially gonna have to cut out that frame and put in, plop in a new frame that would be maybe similar to like the release of a window on a bus. But I, I don't think it's a, a simple undertaking. I, I wouldn't wanna dismiss the idea, but I do think it would be pretty.
Can we find out, can we find out what it might cost?
Not necessarily for approval for this, but at least for a future reference.
Yeah. I mean, because if we ever replace those, we've already, we have talked about this actually early on when I first joined that, the committee because of the replacement parts and the way it's just, there's no airflow. That was one of the very first things I looked at for airflow purpose. But it just, it, it didn't make sense to spend the money at that point in time because of the age of the windows. And other than that, there was really no functionality issues with them. But we can, we can see what, and we know we can't replace them with those windows because those windows.
They'll make them.
So, we can start investigating what our alternatives would be and see where that plays out.
Okay.
Mr. Kelly will be very happy to have another assignment.
Doesn't have to be due tomorrow.
No, I know.
Take it back the next one. Thank you.
Do it on his boat.
His boat. All right. So, are we looking for a vote to approve the draft of the capital plan?
Right.
For FI 20.
Yes. As presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the draft of the capital plan for FI 20 as presented?
Do you move?
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed?
Okay. So, we'll swing this off to capital and then later, I think in the fall, Henry, you and I and we'll, Jeff and you will make our visit to capital. We can ask them about some of these questions that have come up and come back to the committee and let you know what their decision was sort of on paving and if there's any other recommendations they have for us.
You have a budget guidance next on the agenda.
So, this is your opportunity, because your next meeting, we actually will be presenting hard-to-believe your first pass at fiscal year 20. So, we always like to give the school committee members an option to voice any desires, concerns that you would like for us to put into play as we develop your first draft so that you have an opportunity to get things in that first draft versus waiting till it's done and then saying there's things that you are interested in having us look at.
Any thoughts?
Knowing that we are, have a full plate of things that we'll be looking at.
We'll go through the process with Mara and hear her requests.
Needs and wishes.
We don't have to have that information tonight. If something comes to mind, just shoot it over to Henry and he can shoot it over to us. Is that work?
Yeah, that's to work for me.
Okay.
All right. Wonderful. Next item is the consent agenda for the approval of the minutes from September 25th, 2018 for the Dover School Committee Meeting. Any comments, revisions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from September 25th, 2018 as presented in your packet? Second. Discussion. And all in favor? Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Number nine on the agenda is communications. Just for your information, we have the regional school committee and the Sherburne School Committee meetings from September 11th and 17th respectively. As Dawn had mentioned, our next meeting will be November 20th at 8:15 in the morning. Update your calendars, please, to review the budget. And any other items that will come up, we'll make sure that you guys pass along and we'll get in the agenda.
November 15th?
20th.
November 20th.
November 20th at 8:15, yes. And that should be, I did look, that is.
On the agenda.
In our schedule that was sent out, it's accurate on there, so.
And where is it, Henry?
It'll be, it's usually in the conference room at Chicagorah. Great. Any other items? Hearing none. I would like to adjourn at 6:32. Thank you.